Hi, I can't hear you.
I said, you're looking all comfy and warm.
Oh, I can hear you now. I'm in my little sewing room, which doesn't have heat, and I'm freezing. Because I have to get the door shut. How are you feeling?
I'm doing, I feel great. Energy level's good, which is a good thing, because this has been one heck of a week.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I know, it's tough when you can't fall asleep at night. You wake up and it's just, you know, it's like getting right back into everything.
Yeah. What's keeping you up at night these days?
Oh. Gee, I don't know.
Nothing going on, I know. How's your family doing? Everybody doing okay?
Yeah, yeah, we're doing fine so far, so good. Thanks for asking.
I think, I think a lot of people hunker down, but they seem to be doing well.
Yeah, yeah.
And you guys may have heard, but we did have a positive test in the city. We got it on Monday. And so, we're, we're, you know, I think we've done a good job overall for the last month. Social distancing, working from home to the degree that we can, all those things. And so, not sure where we are right now. We had a, we had a cleaning service come in and deep clean City Hall yesterday.
I was gonna ask, yeah.
I wanted to wipe down everything. Doorknobs, you know, railings, desktops, chairs, anything people would touch.
Uh huh, that's good.
Especially the copier.
Hey, everybody. It's 1 o'clock, so we'll go ahead and start our, our work session. The first thing I have on this agenda is, is the Lake County Community Fund Ask. Greg, do you want to talk us through the Community Fund Ask a little bit?
Well, the Community Fund has about, I think, $20,700 and something dollars in their account right now. And they were asking additional $20,000 from the city and $20,000 from the county. And then we got a report out from, from Katie Baldasar. And basically saying she thinks they may need $40,000 a month for the next two months, but that's assuming the current need. And she was speculating that that need might increase in the next couple of months in terms of how many community members are coming to them to ask for help. But the city did agree last night to, to provide $20,000 as needed. And that's something I had, I had expressed to, to the county commissioners. I don't want to just dump $20,000 in there if it turns out the need is, is not, doesn't exist. And the reason I say that is because the, the Community Fund Disaster Relief Fund backfills what they can't get from TANF or SNAP. So that, that's where we are. We, we have agreed to it last night.
Greg, did you say the, was the $40,000 in total? Or a request to the city alone?
No, it's $20,000 request to the city. And that's what we granted.
For the community funder?
Yes, for the disaster relief fund, right, specifically.
Yep. I think we knew, we saw that and anticipated that. I would be, yeah, I'm, I would be happy to match that and do that as well. What are the questions?
I just hope it's enough to get them through this. And we can't tell, we're not going to know until, you know, such time as, you know, too much from now, we can look back on it and say, yeah, we, we have enough, but we don't know yet.
I think Janine's on another meeting, but I think in talking to Janine, it sounds like they will, they are planning to go through all of the money that they currently have in the Community Fund through that disaster relief program.
Okay.
So far, without, without city-county contributions, they will definitely go through that amount of money.
Good. And according to the report out that we got from Katie, they've spent $41,000 so far.
Sarah and Mark, do you guys feel like you're comfortable for us to move this to our agenda tomorrow? To make a decision on the formal funding request from the Community Fund? They've asked us for $20,000.
Yeah, I would be, I would be happy to do that, to, to put it on the agenda for a decision.
Commissioner Glenn, how do you feel?
Um, how, what's our normal timetable for funding the Community Fund?
So we normally, we normally fund them during the budget cycle. But this will go towards specifically disaster relief. Mark, do you have any other questions besides that? So, so this, this $20,000 would go specific into disaster relief. That would go through a process where folks that don't qualify for benefits through Department of Human Services would be able to apply for assistance through this disaster relief fund. And there's a panel of five people that would be determining if those applicants would be eligible for funding through this disaster relief program.
Okay, I have no other questions at this time.
I would also add that that, that committee, the five people, meets every Thursday to make, to make decisions on, on that. And also, one of the things that Katie said is that the TANF emergency disaster funds are about to run out. There may be a second wave of them from the state, but they haven't heard yet. And of course, then, then we'll have people who were getting TANF relief that may need the disaster relief fund from us as well. So hard, hard to note quite yet.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Did this, and the city determine that they were going to replenish the fund on an as-needed basis up to $20,000? Is that correct?
Yeah, that wasn't in the motion, but that's our intent, yes.
Okay.
I don't want to just dump $20,000 in there if it turns out they don't need it all.
All right. That will work, so we can, that's on our agenda for tomorrow, so we'll make a formal decision about that tomorrow. And then we wanted to talk about budgets and projects that we currently have going on, or our capital improvement projects for 2020. Sarah, do you want to kind of start with this? I don't see Crystal on the line.
Yeah, I was just looking, I don't see her on the line either. I, all, I really hope to again, kind of start and grease the wheels on the conversations and the decisions that we'll have to consider. Really is just, you know, when we had talked about payroll and weighing all these things, I have kind of an ongoing living, or document of my own with ideas of, you know, where we might, what I might prioritize and where we might need to make compromises to, to maintain programs or projects and services. I don't know if the rest of the commissioners have also done that. I mean, we talked a little bit yesterday too in the work session of really needing to include that ongoing response through what we might be projecting as a recovery or experience as a recovery. And with the call with CCI this morning, I think, I think it became clear that that is, I mean, it's, it's definitely not something we should communicate as a quick, you know, pulling the trigger and we're back to normal. I think they opened that meeting. I'm forgetting who made the comment, but the sales tax revenue alone, you know, they were talking about the, the state would take 10 years to recover from that reduction. So we know we, it's going to be slow going.
Yeah, and I, I think I would be interested to see some of the data that is coming in in regards to the sales tax, to see what the trends are looking like coming in through the end of March, how the point of delivery is working on the sales tax type of thing. Do you know, Sarah, how we can, how we can get that data? Or Greg, or has anybody had any conversations around any of that data in our, our county?
Well, you know our ongoing desire to have any kind of reporting data on sales tax. And we have none. You know, we get a check each month, that's, that's the only information we get. We, I hope I'm not, you know, reciting old history, but, but about six months ago, we took a run at the, at the county clerk's office with an MOU. We had our attorneys work up an MOU that would have put any liability associated with the information that was given to us regarding sales tax revenue. It would be our liability. And the county clerk would not accept that. She just wouldn't even, wouldn't even consider it. We were told by the state, you know, by the state treasurer, that that's all we needed to do, but it hasn't happened. So I guess the answer is, I, I find it frustrating on an ongoing basis to not even know the basics. I don't, I don't even care to know individual businesses. I want it compartmentalized by types of businesses. And maybe the most important one is to know how much revenue was online revenue versus local tax collection. That would be a huge piece of information right there.
Yeah, this is, that's a good point, Mayor and Kayla. What's up?
I, I was just saying, I'm kind of on the same page as Greg. I think, I'm curious as to, Greg, what was the timing when you presented the, the MOU to the clerk's office? I had not seen, seen that, and I don't know that that came to us per se, or what kind of response you had gotten. But does anybody have any ideas of how we make that actually happen?
I've been thinking about going and sitting down with Patty again. I've talked to her in the last four and a half years a couple of times about this. And, and she seems pretty adamant that that's not, she feels like it's inappropriate. And, you know, I, I've rolled with it. I mean, I don't, I don't know what to tell her. I mean, I, I would like the data, but if she, if she can't give it up, then I don't know any way to make her give it up. That's why I went, went down, that's why you dismed for me, and went down the MOU. I can get some timelines for you on that. I don't remember exact timelines, and I believe that Linda's house office is dealing directly with, with Patty Berger.
Do you know, does anybody, does anybody have any inclination as to how it's done in our neighboring communities? I feel like when I've reached out to Marty in Summit County, she has a much greater handle on sales tax in real time.
As far as I understand, treasurer and finance departments alone are appropriately involved in the collection and dispersment. And, yeah, it's a kind of a mystery how it's set up here and the documents that we've been, that have been shared with us outline it differently than we're implementing and administering. So I think that that's something that definitely needs clarification. And we mentioned this at one of the last meetings with Christie and Dola too. And she said she'd help us, give us assistance there too, to, even just to collect. Kayla, as you're asking, information on typical administration or collection of sales tax, sorry.
Yeah, let me also, let me also add that the city, in, in our MOU that we have with the county, keep in mind, we're very different than most city counties in that the city lead bill does not have a tax. And that, that because of a lawsuit, now the, now the county remits tax to the city that's collected within the city. And we pay, as part of that MOU with, with the, with the county, we pay $750 a month plus 2% of total tax collections, which is a lot of money.
We did put that request out to Christie formally. So we're waiting for a response to better organize the continuation of figuring this out. FYI.
All right, thank you.
Well, um, Crystal's on another call right now, so I don't know that she will, she will be joining us. So sales tax, for us, we need to look at long-term recovery and, and projects. Mark, what, what kind of feedback do you have here in terms of budget and projects and that, and that kind of thing? And, and where we should focus our energy in terms of recovery? Or move things around in terms of capital projects?
Well, I think it's very important that we deal with the lack of income before we start wondering how we're going to disperse what we have. This could be very painful for Lake County, just because the loss of sales tax. You have all the rents, you're, now we've got the Community Fund wanting more money because they're having problems. It's just going to snowball from this point forward. I'd rather not commit funds until I know what I know. And right now, I don't know what I don't know.
And I think, I think just to clarify too, a little bit about the Community Fund, I don't think the Community Fund themselves is short on funds. And Greg, you can chime in if you feel I'm speaking out of line here. I don't feel like the Community Fund is, is, is running out of funds. I think they're utilizing a tool that they have for disaster relief in order to supplement families that need to have assistance through this COVID event. And so what they're asking is for us to give them that money to assist those families similar to the fashion of Department of Human Services. So I definitely don't want the perception to be out there that the Community Fund is coming back to us for money because they're hurting for money. The Community Fund is trying to leverage the funding going into the community to keep families in their homes and keep food on their tables. And, and I think, go ahead.
Well, that's true. It's just a direct pass-through. It's just a way to get money to the community. And there's not, there's no charge associated with it or anything. It goes directly to the community. And the only reason they're asking is because it's a disaster relief fund and, you know, bill of generation and, and full circle and are using these funds to help people in the community who can't meet rent and utility obligations right now.
And so what happens when these funds run out? That they're asking for now? I have a funny feeling they're going to run out.
They might. I mean, it depends on the demand, and it depends on how long this goes on. So you, you could be right, but we just don't know.
Yeah, I think it will, I think it will depend on the length of time of the event and the demand on the fund through the length of time of the event. You know, like if the stay-at-home order is starting to be lifted and then folks are able to go back to work, then they may not need to come to that fund for additional coverage for rent through May, or whatever that might look like. It may only be a one-time thing. We, we just don't know the impact at this point. Kaylee, do you, I know that you sit on the Community Fund as part of the, the board that determines how that money is handed out and who that money is handed out to. Do you have anything to add?
Hey, um, no, you and Mayor captured it spot-on. We do review, as you said, full circle funding, and that funding, that's a bit of rent and utilities, but it has to go to full circle families. Build a Generation has some unrestricted funding, and that is a bit easier to replenish, or that's what we've been told. So we're kind of prioritizing spending that because the Community Fund Disaster Relief is really by donations or obviously by generous governments that are helping. But we have been, we've met twice, and we'll meet again tomorrow. And we're working on making sure that the numbers are accurate, but we will be pushing that out. How many individuals have been helped? How many households? What the total funding is? And we're also trying to capture that TANF funding that Mayor mentioned. And also trying to see what's appropriate in, the funds are smaller, but referring folks to FERC, especially our families who were employed in Summit County. That process lies there, so they were obviously a little bit more generous, or that was our hope. So DHS is certainly following up with a lot of individuals. But a lot of folks have been served, and, you know, I echo Commissioner Glenn's concern on what's going to happen when everything starts running out. And that's absolutely a concern. And I think which stems the conversation of what you guys were bringing up earlier on doing a deep dive into the financials. And I don't know if the system that we work on does projections for us, or if Crystal would be doing that, or whatever it looks like. But, you know, we're constantly hearing that the state is doing cuts, and that's certainly concerning. And that's going to trickle down to, to locals. So, you know, we're, we're doing, doing what we can with what we have. And certainly trying to help those families who got cut off very quickly. When we're reviewing, some people, you know, as soon as this incident really started spinning out for Colorado, that first week of March, they've been out of work since then, so it's a month and a half. And whether it's a single-person household or all the providers, it's certainly concerning. And we don't know if that stay-at-home will be listed in a couple of weeks, or if it'll be extended, and what changes. But I've been answering the other questions. But I think you guys covered it.
Thank you. So I think that topic is pretty covered. Sarah, what else did you want to share from this morning from the CCI call? You're on mute.
I'm thinking. I'm looking at the notes. Boo, I don't know. It, I mean, it just seemed like a lot of, you know, as we're going through it, just a lot of the same kind of reiterating that organization is, 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 people are getting, agencies are getting better organized yet. As we know, it's not, there aren't, there aren't clear timelines and deadlines and ends in sight to some of these things. You know, it's, it's clear that, and a comment made by Colleen yesterday, state and federal funding is not going to cover all of this. And so I think sooner than later. And it's, it's also just as I'm, I'm personally feeling right now really hard to dig in here on a Zoom and virtual to like work through and pull up some of those spreadsheets that, that Christie had sent us from Dola or, but I, sorry, I'd like, I'd like to maybe look at in one of our next work sessions, maybe truly getting down to nuts and bolts and talking about needs and wants of county services. Because we are gonna, you know, and prioritizing the capital projects. I'm curious, Kayla, if there are any other new thoughts on, you know, for me, in my head, I'm thinking fire station, justice center, airport industrial park. So, and for me, I think justice center and airport industrial park rise to the top of the list as far as long-term projected risk and liability reduction and revenue generation potential, especially in the wake of what we're going through right now. And I have not attended the last planning or management meetings on the fire station, so I don't know if there's been any discussion on, or new discussion on the fire station.
We haven't had any new discussion on the fire station. Greg, you can chime in as you'd like here. I believe that Sarah Dallas and Dan were looking at additional funding opportunities for, for us to finish the fire station. I think we will definitely need to explore those. And Chris, you can chime in as well. I mean, we haven't, we haven't had an opportunity to really have Peak 360 say, "Come and get your stuff." So we're, we're still kind of in limbo with what that's even going to look like going forward to nail down a cost.
Yeah, this is, this is Chris. I was going to chime in there just by way of update for folks that, that haven't been involved. We have the, have received proposals from six different contractors to serve as the project manager. And the important aspect of that is that we really need somebody with the expertise to come in and look at the project and what has been done and what materials are there to determine what the actual scope of the remaining work to be done is. So right now, you know, I think we, none of us have any type of, of an idea of what it's really going to take to finish that project until we get that kind of feedback from, you know, the chosen project manager. You know, we anticipate, obviously, because of all the COVID emergent issues that everybody's been dealing with over the last month, it did push making a selection of the project manager behind. So, but I, I think our goal is to, to have someone selected by the end of the month, so we can start on that, what I call due diligence, to figure out what the scope of the work that remains to be done. And we really need to have that information before we can figure out what it's going to cost to finish the project. Because then, once we get that scope of the remaining work to be done, then we'll issue the RFP for a new general contractor, and then they will bid on what it's going to take to finish the project. And at that point in time, we will have an idea of what the, the overall cost may be. overall cost may be in order for us to then look at how that cost is going to be funded.
You remind me that the project manager scope of work, is that based on phasing in like, like you said, figuring out what exactly the status of the project is? And then is their role dependent on whether or how we then move forward based on that information?
By phasing, I would think, yeah, there are going to be certain steps that'll be needed with the first one being an analysis of where we are and where we need to go. But it, this isn't a situation where it's anticipated that the, the project manager that's engaged will only do one of the phases. We're hoping to have some money that will come in and do, you know, take the project from where it is now through completion. But just not knowing what the, the overall status is with it, it's hard to know what the full scope of their work will be. And I think what's reflective of that is that the bids that were received, there were some of them that, that were really widely divergent in terms of the cost and the services. And I think that's in part because we didn't know enough to be able to give them detail of what they were going to need to do as a project manager. You know, we're hopeful that once somebody comes in and looks at it, they'll say, okay, well, you can continue to use these aspects, these materials and supplies there and the modular units are, you know, 90 plus percent finished. So we should be able to get those and that'll help expedite. And then, you know, the RFP sent out for the project manager, part of it is based on if we determine that the scope is smaller, you know, than we think based on what has been completed, then things will be adjusted accordingly. Did that answer your question, Sarah?
Yeah, I think to add to that, I think we don't necessarily have a full, here's what it's going to cost you for us to take this project from where it's at right now until completion because they just, we just don't know any information at this point. And, and the bids that we received were from, I mean, we had bids that were $50,000 for the completion of the project. And then we had another one that was $400,000 for the completion of the process. So I think it's kind of hard for us to, to make that happen. Amber, do you have a question at this point?
Yes, sir. I raised my hand when you all were talking about your contribution to the Community Fund. So not related to this topic.
Sorry, Amber.
Can you repeat that? I didn't hear all of, all of it.
Yeah, sorry, Kayla. I had raised my hand when you all were talking about the contribution to the Community Fund. So not a question related to the fire station.
Oh, did, did we answer your question or do you have an additional question?
No, I do, but I can ask when you're finished.
Okay. So then I think we have like that justice center piece, which we still want to continue to work on. Definitely. But I think we, with that, we need to kind of see what we're looking at going forward for the next, however, I mean, if we do go the route of a certificate of participation, what that, what that payment is going to be each year and, and project what we can look at for value and revenue for the next several years to come in. Because I'm not sure, I mean, we have to be able to balance that, but it's not, it's not worth it to let other services suffer for that sole project. You know what I mean?
Right. It seems that with the, with the fire station project, we need information to best determine the next steps and moving forward. With the Justice Center, we have the funding in place to do the diligence and move forward to understand then, and you know, through all this, I think, again, it's that, it's just another imposed consideration of the reality of our needs to pare down and really best direct maybe that schematic planning and design work to look at. I mean, I think it would be worth our while to, to continue through that exercise and then get a, a, an appropriately sized facility that's going to, that's going to meet our needs and then see what that, of course, really means for construction.
Right. I think too, you know, there is an opportunity to look at like phasing in, what it would be like to phase in if we had to go that route, you know?
Phasing in?
Like if we have to just build a jail right now and then phase in the additional once, once the, the full recovery from this has happened or that once we have the full, we can recoup some of our valuation or whatever that looks like. I think just being, being creative through that project is, is going to be really important for us right now.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I also, yeah, I don't disagree at all. And I also wonder, you know, part of, part of the priority and the importance of the Justice Center, we know is the jail and the liability and the physical inadequate space, space that we currently have. But I wonder through, you know, through the COVID event and other law enforcement issues that do come up, you know, we know that probation could serve significantly more people if they had better space to do that. And I know it's probably just a guessing game, but I suppose that that need is going to increase through the next period of time and not decrease. And so again, it's, you know, I'm, I mean, I, I don't know if anybody has a projection there or I definitely want to include the proper folks before getting into the, too into the weeds on a conversation like that and making any determinations there. But I do, I mean, I think it's just important to keep all of those services in mind and the courts again, you know, if we can get people through this so that there's less, less stress and less of a barrier on their daily lives if they are able to go back to work. You know, providing swift opportunity for scheduling and working through the justice system and the courts is something that would definitely benefit the community, you know? So it's not, it's not just the tangible, it's not necessarily just the tangible physical space of the jail being inadequate.
Sarah, this is Chris and the one thing I can appreciate the conversation and have been anticipating some of this and, but the one thing I'd want to make sure the commissioners keep on their radar about the Justice Center is that, you know, what, what the costs are as long as you don't have one. And that's, you know, we're looking at roughly one and a half million dollars a year. The $500,000 roughly, it's, it's costing to transport, you know, the inmates back and forth as well as the increased construction costs that are going up an average of a million dollars a year. So, you know, when you start looking at the phasing or what it is, how much it's going to cost, and especially if you start looking at, okay, what is it going to cost to service the, the debt of a certificate of participation to make sure that you figure that one and a half million dollars in. And especially right now because I don't know, you know, pretty much the market's dropped at the bottom in terms of any financing, you know, it's the, if anybody needs money right now and can qualify for it, it's the, probably the best time in 50 years to try to get financing for projects like this. So, you know, that, that's something just, I want to make sure that that just stays on the radar in terms of, don't look at it just from the perspective of how much it's going to build, how much it's going to cost to build a new facility, but also what it's going to save the community in real dollars if you, you know, if you do go on and continue down the path of building a new facility.
Yeah.
Definitely. I just think that we need to, we need to definitely make sure that we have those forecasting numbers appropriately outlined. You know, the Centers for Priorities-Based Budgeting really helped Clear Creek County with some of their projections for five to 10 years and some of those long-term projections. And I think DOLA was talking about some of those options being free yesterday or very limited cost yesterday in our work session, which might be something that we want to look at, particularly with the volatility of how our valuation actually happens. When, when our, our valuation includes the calculation with mine by proceeds, you know, we know, we know next year that we should be expecting a drop. And so given the volatility of that is a million dollar payment, really something that we can say without a doubt, we're not going to have to affect any other services in the next 20 years and we're going to fit this in. I, I think that's something we need to really think about when we're, when we're thinking about the schematic and the building and the cost of this facility. Definitely.
Yeah. I think, but I, and I think that I, I think about, I'm thinking about the same way, but instead of, I mean, I, I think we also have to add to that, you know, if we are taking that million, like we need to, we need to adjust perhaps county operations and services to make that million happen and to secure that through our, through our budget.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And so I think that if we're, if we're still continuing down this path, which I think we need to, I think we, we definitely need to take a hard look at that now. You know, because going through this situation and going through this, this pandemic and knowing, you know, that we're going to take a, a hard hit in a budget year where we had a really good year, what's it going to look like when a future board has a really bad year? You know, are we willing to risk recreation programming and emergency management funding or, or airport funding to pay for this? And so I think, I think we need to, to figure out kind of how to outline that plan a little bit, you know?
Yeah. I'm glad you brought up that DOLA opportunity that Christie mentioned yesterday. I think we should look into that sooner than later and perhaps in combination with the city. So that we can, as a community, combine and, and talk about shared efficiencies.
Do you want me to, to reach out to Christie and see if she can connect us with that list of, of companies that she was talking about yesterday?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think what I can do is I can email her, ask her for that list of companies and include the three of us and city representatives on that list.
Yeah.
And then also ask her about what we can do to get some projections on sales tax and, and maybe like point of delivery and that kind of thing. And you know, the other thing too, that we haven't thought about, and Chris, this might be good information for you to pass along to Katie, is I know that we've kind of talked about not having a ballot initiative on the table right now, but potentially in the future, if we were to go to a ballot initiative, we have multiple options. So I don't, I don't know the data and I don't know how to find out about the data of what we would see if, if people were, if we were collecting the sales tax on vehicle purchases within the county or outside of the county. You know, if you purchase a vehicle outside of the county, you only pay the 2.9% sales tax to the state. You don't pay the 4% to Lake County. So if we were to enact that, how do we enact it? Is it a ballot measure? And, and what, what would we look at in terms of revenue that way? You know, I, I think we're like one of the only counties in the state that even, that doesn't even collect that sales tax and we're just foregoing that money. So, so is that an opportunity as well? Would, would some of those companies that Christie mentioned yesterday be able to give us that information or look at the data that we do have available and give us a projection on that information? Those are questions that we could ask potentially.
No, I think we should chip away at all of those things and hopefully assign that, I mean, to delegate those, those pieces to the right folks and get those implemented.
Yeah, this is Chris. Kayla, I'll share that information with Katie, but I know one of the reasons why the decision was made to move away from a ballot initiative was based on not only local intel, but also intel as to other communities that have needed to build a new jail or justice center facility that it would not, they could not get the taxpayer will to fund those through ballot initiatives. And so that's why the certificate of participation was the route that, that other communities have chosen to use for what they essentially call, you know, not, not really popular initiatives, if you will. You know, most people don't want to spend a lot of money to build jails and justice centers because, you know, they don't see that as a high priority in the community. And so, but I'll, I'll mention it to Katie about this vehicle sales tax issue because if that's something to where it's just an opportunity the county hasn't capitalized on, then by all means, regardless of the Justice Center, I would think it's something I should look at, period, as a way to bring some more revenues in, into the county.
Absolutely. I think too, for us right now to talk through, through budget, Amber had emailed us with a question about some work to be done on the skate park. Amber, can you talk us through the recreational projects that we had set aside money for in the budget this year?
Yeah, I'll have to pull up that list. I don't have it in front of me. But there was money set aside for grooming, lights at Huckfin Park, repairs at the Huckfin Skate Park.
Sinage?
Finishing the Sixth Street Gym floor. Yep, signage. And I think I'm missing something, but I can't think of it.
Well, and so just a quick response to some of those, I mean, my, my thoughts are, you know, if potentially and more likely, we'll have to look at closing indoor facilities and it might make sense to just close them through the summer or for the next six months and not do some of the maintenance on some of those projects and focus on outdoor where we'll be able to maintain social distancing and appropriate utilization of those facilities, anticipating an extension and of COVID. So that was just a kind of very simple, basic approach that I was starting to think through.
Amber, what are your thoughts on, on that?
You know, I think, I don't know, I think this is a bigger conversation. I think we should probably be talking about projects across all departments as a whole, as opposed to just things that are on the table for recreation. I do think there are some of those projects that can be put on hold and postponed over others. I think the skate park in particular is in really bad shape and it's really dangerous and we're getting a lot of feedback on that from the community. So I think something like that we need to go forward with as opposed to, you know,
The gym.
Sixth Street Gym floor, that can wait until next year. The lighting at the skate park, I think, or at the ice rink, excuse me, I think that can also wait. So, yeah.
I completely agree, Amber. And I'm, I think we're calling you out just because you're on the call, not because we're going to be only looking at recreation.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It just felt that way a little bit.
No. And I, and I'm glad, and Amber and I haven't even gone down this road yet and discussed this, but I'm glad to hear Amber. It sounds like you and I are starting to think along the same lines as that because I, again, I think it, especially in response to the event of what's going on, you know, we're not going to be, and, and some of the conversation we had yesterday about special permitting and events going on or special event permitting, we're not going to want to encourage, you know, we're not going to have basketball league or whatever might We're not going to want to encourage, you know, we're not going to have basketball league or, or whatever might confine people in, in the space of the Sixth Street Gym in all likelihood. So let's maintain some of that, some of those facilities so that they don't degrade and they're not a safety hazard. I would, I would be interested in, in getting, yeah, investing to get to a point of, of good routine maintenance. Having facilities that are going to encourage social distancing and healthy outdoor activity. But postponing those for the indoor.
In terms of, of budget. Greg, I've got a question for you. I know that we had seen the fire department add an additional crew. Is there a projection for that to have an increase in the overall fire department budget for 2020?
No, because we used existing firemen and reserves to put that D-shift, isolated D-shift in place.
Okay, that's good to know. What else would you like to talk about at this point in terms of budget, Sarah or Mark?
This is Amber. Can I ask Greg another question?
No, 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 no.
Mayor, I was just wondering about when you made that decision to fund the community fund with $20,000. Has the city already gone through a process of looking at how your budget is going to be affected by COVID-19 so that you knew that you had that revenue available? Or are you just giving that and you will kind of figure out later?
It's a great question. I'm, I, I am kind of a cowboy, but I'm not that, I'm not that bad. No, we, we, we did kind of an in-depth analysis of where we are right now. We think our reserve, it's, reserve is always a moving target. It changes, but we think we have $2,067,000 in our, in our current reserve. That's, that's unencumbered. And so that means if we spend, and, and, and last night, we, we made the decision as we had a week ago, that we, we were going to commit $220,000. $20,000 for the emergency relief fund and then $200,000 for a business relief effort. Which we hope to have checks to business people by the end of this month. It's very aggressive, but I feel like our businesses are hurting right now and, and we may be the first money they get. Anyway, the answer to your question is yes. If we, if we then have $1.8 million reserve. Even if we were to drop revenue by 50%, which I, overall, which I, I would, that, that would be pretty drastic. But if that were to happen, we could still sustain ourselves for 14 to 15 months without having to make any kind of reductions in, in, in city employees.
Thank you. I just asked because I thought that might be helpful in terms of, you know, I think Commissioner Glenn and I are thinking a lot alike about how do we commit funds with not knowing kind of where we're at financially? And so that might help the county move forward and kind of looking at a process like that before we make any big decisions about funding.
I think as Commissioner Glenn pointed out, you, you have to at least have an inkling of where you are. And, and at least make a, even if it's a wild guess, make a guess of what the future holds. And take what you think may be a worst case scenario and then make your decision based on that. And that's what we did.
Right. And Amber, I think to kind of add to Greg's point of looking at a potential 50% reduction for, for the city. Their primary, their, their, their revenue is primarily sales tax. Is that correct, Mayor?
That is correct. About 52, 53%.
Yeah. And, and so I think that's acting under the assumption that, you know, the majority of that sales tax in the city is coming to a stop. I think in the county, we have kind of a different, a different outlook of where our funding sources are coming from. And so we have a much higher funding source through property tax than the city and, and our reserves are pretty decent, I believe.
I'd also, I'd also like to point out and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I mean, it is, you know, now the city with a potential impact to sales taxes, looking at a 50% reduction. The county knows that we've been looking at a 50% reduction with climax in property tax. So we are in the same boat, so to speak. And I think that it's important to remember that, you know, while, while the city might have two plus million in reserve and have 15, 16 months of employee costs covered to provide services. We really only have about eight months of payroll costs covered. And for pay periods, as we discussed a couple of meetings ago, is approximately $1.4 million. For the county. So, so I just, I, I think that most of us on this call understand that proportionately. But to continue to communicate that perhaps to people who say, well, the county has 6.8 million in the general fund balance. Well, that's not, that's not going to go, that doesn't, it's a very different allocation than the city. And we have much more to put that money towards.
Right. And we have, we definitely have different funding sources that we can pull from. And I think it's important too, to, to look at. You know, this is, this funding is going to, the potential funding for the community fund would be a last, a last stop for anybody that doesn't qualify for TANF funding. Which TANF funding is available for somebody that doesn't qualify for any other benefits. And so, so I think, you know, there's, there's some room to make some considerations there, but, but I feel like if we look at our fund balance worksheet as a whole and piece that out. We have probably around 12 months worth of operating. Just in fund balances to pull from. And I would not anticipate, I mean, I think we were very, very generous in our expenditures and conservative in our revenues going into 2020 through the budgeting process. So I, I really don't feel at this point that we're in dire straits or near dire straits at this point.
That being said, I think that we still have to make some, we have to have some hard conversations about needs and wants and must haves and nice to haves and prioritizing things with some better sense of certainty. Moving forward over the next year or two. And take a hard stance on, on strategy.
Agreed. Does anybody have any other questions for us today or right now? No, no questions. Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything to add at this point?
I do not.
So I'm going to move forward with an email to Christie. Does that sound like what we had talked about? Asking her for that list of third parties to assist us with some of those dashboards. And ask for additional follow-up on sales tax info.
Yeah, that'd be great. And also that regional task force you talked about participating in. Maybe just, of course, keep us in mind on, I mean, the, the other part of this conversation that's not necessarily typical, typically budgeted is, is that ongoing response. And so we need to, we need to kind of get an idea of what that will look like from public health and other partners through the rest of the year, I think.
Hey Kit, while I have you guys on the phone. Chris and I and Greg had attended the city council meeting last night and there had been brought up the point that public health is, is lacking funding for testing. Is that, and I'm, I'm bummed that Kaylee jumped off and I didn't ask this before. Is that something that, that we need to focus money on at this point?
You know, when we were having that conversation last night, I had heard a hint of that, but one of the things I thought about is, is I haven't heard where funding may be coming from. And I would assume for statewide or even nationally focused testing. That would be for antibody testing is what they're talking about. That, that, that funding, I think is largely going to come from, from state and federal government.
My understanding was maybe the funding or just resources, resource allocation is being interchanged in terms of the terminology, but we've been denied for the request for more tests to come in. And then, Kayla, let me know if you also heard this on the call this morning with CCI. Or Jill Ryan with CDPHG said that it's kind of moving from that preparation and tagging data into that antibody, focusing on that antibody. And treatment that will be the most impactful from this point forward. And she also thought that maybe they were in, in a matter of weeks rather than months or years to, to kind of come to a good point on or making progress, like that we could then, that could then be dispersed across the state or the nation.
Yeah, I, I concur with what you're talking about that, that was relayed to us at CCI this morning. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, we weren't missing having a conversation as a board or with city leadership around costs in our, our local public health department and making sure that we're, we're giving them the financial resources they need. And I just had not heard of a request made to us particularly for any funding for testing. Or that if we had the funding, we could get more tests.
That's it. I, yeah, I don't, I don't, I have not heard the particular request to us for funding. I think it's, I think it's our, I think what may still be helpful is the ad, us advocating together as city and county to the powers that be to get tests here and, and that, those supplies here to continue that.
Okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that, that we weren't overlooking that or not paying any attention to that.
Yeah, yeah. Let's ask that if we jump on the EOC call here. I can ask that question.
Okay. Yeah, I think if you want to do that, that'd be great. And then, I don't know what that is.
That looks like, it's Amber's video. It looks like a hand or a shirt. I feel like I'm in that movie where you like went into somebody, that old like Dennis Crane.
Maybe she dropped it in the pool, like floundering. I don't know. It looked like water. So anyway, does anybody have any other, any other questions or anything that they want us to think about or consider at this time? I think too, Commissioner Glenn, I will send an email to Crystal and copy the board to ask her to give us a budget projection and if she feels like it would be appropriate for us to fund the disaster relief fund at the community fund at this time. So that we have that, that financial dive done before we actually make a decision on that tomorrow. So I'll ask her to do that for us. And then, is there anything, anything else at this point? So I'll send those emails out this afternoon. Is there anything else at this point? Anybody? No? Okay. So we'll, we'll continue with these work sessions on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And a meeting on Thursday, if we need a meeting on Thursday to solidify anything that comes out of a work session. Just to get through this, this COVID event and be sure that we're continuing to be informed as a board and have these conversations. And we do, we will have a meeting on Monday. I talked to Patty about the agenda today. She's got a couple liquor licenses on there. So I, I, I also did join Paul's department meeting this morning at nine. We're, we're talking through the special events. They're going to reach out to surrounding counties to give information to us and Colleen. About what the summer is looking like in surrounding counties in terms of events. There is definitely some miscommunication and misinterpretation around what is happening with boom days. There is, there is this interpretation that the county and the city canceled the boom day celebration and that we have not canceled the bike races. And so in speaking with Ann this morning and Stacy, I clarified for them that to my knowledge, and Commissioner Glenn and Commissioner Mudge and Mayor, if you can add to this. To my knowledge, boom days did not approach us about their event. Stacy also shared with us this morning that their special event permit was not complete. Or ready to go through the process to come to the Board of County Commissioners either. That she had sent it back with questions from referral agencies and had not had a response. Mayor, do you have, or Commissioner Glenn, do you have any information on the boom day celebration or Commissioner Mudge? Was anybody in contact with you about that?
This is Commissioner Glenn. The Boom Days Committee themselves are the ones that made the decision to cancel Boom Days. It did not come from this elected official. And I'm probably sure it didn't come from Greg. They did this on their own. In the event that this continued until August. They have to put up so much money upfront for licenses, porta potties. And all these fees that they would pay forward would not be refundable. So they took it upon themselves to cancel the event.
Yeah, Mark, yeah, Mark is exactly correct. Mark Heide called me the morning after they made that decision. And he said, I just want to give you a heads up, you know, we're going to cancel the Boom Days main event, but we're still going to hold Boom Days. We're still going to have Harrison Avenue closed at least for one day. And we're going to make, we're going to turn it into just a locals event. Won't have all the vendors and, and just as Mark said, they have to put, they have to spend about $20,000 on the front end of this thing. To make it happen in the way that it's happened in the past. And all they're going to do is keep it very low key this year, but they're going to be on that same weekend.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good to know. I wonder if it would be beneficial for me to reach out to maybe Rachel or Marcia even and ask to have that, how we can share that information.
They, they know. I talked to Rachel about it. She said Sean is going to do it. I think she said he's going to put an article in the paper this week, which we should get this afternoon about very thing. I, I'm, I'm assuming it's in there, but I, I can't be sure.
Okay. Awesome. I just, I just wanted to be sure that we were all operating on the same page because I think that there was even some internal disconnect about, you know, one, one staff member at Building and Land Use had assumed that the county had canceled that event. You know, the staff member that handles special event permits said, well, no, they didn't even apply for their special event permit all the way through. They didn't follow up with the referral agencies. And then, you know, there was that chiming in of, And then, you know, there was that chiming in of, well, no, the Boom Days Committee themselves canceled it. And so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about that special event. And about special events in the county actually going forward. Greg, do you have any information on how special events for the summer are going to be handled at the city?
We're not going to jump the gun on any of that. People are canceling. The race series may not cancel, but postpone their mid-June marathon heavy half to September, maybe the second weekend in September. But they haven't made that decision. They're going to come to city council that first meeting in May. And at that time, I think they're going to probably have a decision in mind. In terms of the August races, they're just, they just have to take a wait-and-see attitude because, you know, states are already talking about lifting stay-at-home orders. I watched on the news yesterday. There's a lot of movement towards opening the economy back up. And so that's where we are right now.
Paul was talking about that as well today. They've tried, they've reached out to Lifetime Fitness and haven't had anybody return their call at this point in regards to what their plans are around special events. And the other thing that Paul was wanting to make sure he took into consideration, especially with reaching out to surrounding counties and our regional partners was, you know, should this event continue to go on, it is an international event. And so it brings folks from basically everywhere. And so Paul kind of wanted to be sure to tread lightly, but to keep a finger on the pulse so that, you know, if we're looking at, we might lift the stay-at-home order now, but look at, you know, a second wave coming, projected to come through in early September and we need to prepare in August what that looks like for those events. So I think Paul has a very good idea and sense of what direction to go in with that specifically. So just some information for FYI.
I was just trying to discreetly tell everybody that I was going to jump off of here, but as I went to do that, I think I'm the host, so if I do that, I'm going to end the meeting. So I won't do that.
Well, no, I actually, I think that we are at a point where we can adjourn as long as nobody has any other questions. Does anybody have any other questions at this point? No? Okay. Well, I think with that, then we can go ahead and adjourn. And I'll follow up with the email correspondence that I get. And if Sarah will do the same, then that'll be good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.